It was nice and I got. Well, we're getting better at you know. We got a daughter and I have. We got a. Oh, what's that? And I got my. So that's. I left my. All the. Uh, Lincoln. All the uh. What's your favorite? Henry, you know. When it starts on. I tell you. I thought. I was there. I was out to like. What is she? Twenty nine Memorial. We just. But she uh. She doing a. I don't see. Not. It's like a mini. It's thinking. Later in June, so she wants to see. She like. She not as. I can divide the volume. But she wants to be. I tell someone. See. She say I'm playing games, so she could punch me. Anyway. I should. I call them. So I want to. I said. Yeah, I was feeling you might have seen out. I. I feel over here. Red Bull. So. Ruby Wrench. Uh, I think. McCosby is over. No, McCosby over. But not. Over there.
Well, you know, again, that's such a dangerous.
I took the uh. Is I have a. Like. So I think it's quite. My work.
What am I?
I don't know. The way they work here. But I uh. I should do the power pack. With the valve. Eight miles to go today. I have to take my head. Somebody's miles. Eight miles. Sixty one. So that was.
Sure.
Must use a benefit to pay her.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Literally, it's not. One hour ago. My other.
Where you think? We hear where she.
No, it'll. Assuming so. We get better.
It's a big.
I did see.
We are live, folks. Mind your keys and gears. Wow. Gee, I should be on like. Soon as we tell people we're recording. That was impressive. Joe, can you hear us?
Yeah, do you read?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Loud and clear. Okay, seven thirty. Let's call the meeting. Morning. President.
President. We stand by. United States of America. Republic for which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brano.
Here.
Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Mr. Hartman.
Here.
Mr. Thorne.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Nibbitt.
Here.
You go according, Mr. President. Okay. Uh, the governor has extended the proclamation, which allows us to conduct remote meetings. In opposition to the OMA. Uh, this. Extension of the proclamation uh goes till. May twenty eighth. So this will be our last one at this point unless the governor extends it or revise the state revises their statutes and allow us to do remote. Uh, without going through the hoops and. Jobs that they've got for us right now. Uh, that being said, uh, Joe can hear us?
Yes.
One of attending remote this evening, which will mean that all votes once again will be by roll call. No votes, voice votes this evening. Okay, minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the May second two thousand twenty two meet?
Second, Deatley.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Deatley. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Being no corrections. I have a little call, please. Mr. Minnick.
Aye.
Bruno.
Since I wasn't here, I abstained.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, one extension motion, so carries. Gentlemen. Uh, President's report. Uh, I'm going to ask a favor this evening. We do have a presentation scheduled for eight o'clock this evening by KDOT, the King County Department of Transportation. I understand the gentlemen are in attendance at the moment, so I would like a motion to amend the agenda to move the eight o'clock presentation up to the current time. So.
Second.
Moved by Hartman, seconded by Thorn. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbitt.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes and motion so passes. Gentlemen. Your floor, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Thank you again for moving uh our presentation early. I I could take the first three and pass it down. So my name is David Sitko. I work for the King County Division of Transportation. I'm a construction project manager and I'm here with my boss, Dave Bush, chief of construction and Travis Redd, as a project manager for employee construction. So I'm here because I wanted to discuss, uh, we have a yearly patrol, uh, and this year the twenty twenty two resurcement patrol. One of the roads we have is Randall Road. The section is from I ninety to Carrington Drive, which is a little bit south of uh Illinois seventy two. Right, uh, work uh right now consists of three inches of HMA milling and then some patches potentially and paving an inch of level binder and two inches of surface. So they're going to be taking out three inches and putting back three inches. Um, and uh, the reason I brought this up is uh, we're looking to uh, we've been approached by Cloyde to do uh night work, which consists of work from eight P M to five A M. This would potentially potentially be starting the thirty first of May, uh, right after Memorial Day weekend. Yeah, Monday through Friday, uh, eight P M to five A M. And uh, you uh, you can see on the map, probably uh, we have a section there. Um, just going over it, um, where we anticipate about seven to ten days of milling. And that'll be, uh, that'll have about nine semi trucks, a grinder and a sweeper. Uh, that'll be when they take that uh, three inches off the road surface. And then that'll be followed by about thirteen to seventeen nights of paving, which would be they come in, do that first level of level binder, first layer of level binder. And then another two inches of though, it's called uh, stone matrix asphalt or S M A asphalt. Um, we've uh, we've seen that the night work is just this very, very convenient for the people. If we were to do that during the day, I mean, it's just, it would, the traffic would be back up. And we found that not only is that work safer, because Cloyde has a lot of experience doing that work on tollways. They have a whole lighting system for the, for all the equipment out there and all their employees have a correct P P E for night work. And we just, we've had, we've seen it uh, where we're uh, previous instances with other villages have been well received. Um, and we just were uh, we're looking to do that because it has just much, much less effect on the traffic during the day when we have it at night paving. Um, so yeah, so we just wanted to bring that and uh, looking for the support in occurrence with uh, those simply how because there is a little bit of uh residences over there on Randall Road.
Explain that, David, that we are kicking extra steps with the contractor to make sure that we mitigate. We're trying to achieve steady drones. Steady drone like the white noise of the equipment constantly running as they progress through the process. We've told the drivers that they cannot slam their bucket with their gates because normally after they empty, slam them, we don't want that. So we have areas on either end of the project where they'll be slamming their gates away from the residents and not disturb them. We recently did a similar process up Elgin around twenty going up Elgin towards um. Highland or whatever, same type of almost orientation with the homes that you have. Residents had no problems, no issues. It was very quiet. Mr. Sitko was very big on making sure the contractor complied with it. So we think it's better for you folks. It'll give you a faster, less destructive process. It's safer. It'll give us a better product because S M A asphalt has to go down hot and fast. It's not regular asphalt. It's a stone matrix. It's a high um, high traffic asphalt. Um, so it would be better for us if we could also. Fashionable. You would during the daytime, two o'clock on Randall, you guys don't. It's, you could walk, you know, through traffic. So. Here we are asking, you know, we want to be good neighbors. We just, it's our role. I don't just want to throw it down your throat and say I'm doing that. Who want to talk to you and get your confirms and make sure you're okay with it? If you say no, we won't do that. Okay, well, we would like to. So that's our. Thank you.
Uh, both north and south now?
Yes, correct. The whole, the whole thing.
The whole thing. It just really, it seems like it's a long time, seven, ten days to scrape and thirteen to seventeen days to put down the asphalt.
We're giving you a worst case scenario. We'd rather report long and come up short than give you something bright and rosy and then have it. Go on for weeks and weeks and have everybody go, what the heck's going on? So we normally, I'm sorry, should stand up. We normally report long and try and come up short. That way people are happy. It's your starter. And you tell me.
So when they, so from the uh. Traffic logistics situation. If you're doing um, the lanes, um, let's say the lanes that are. On our side, Randall Road. So do you do, so all traffic's on the other side? Is that who you're going to reorientate to traffic flow?
Basically, it's four lanes, bro.
Two or two or three lanes. Um, then we would have one lane uh, right, Travis?
We would close one northbound lane at a time and then we would move, move over. So we wouldn't have traffic going against each other on a southbound side or northbound side.
So you're not diverting traffic. That's right. No. Either side or. And like Frankie and Randall would at two o'clock in the morning, you could set up a chair up. Right.
Would you take a picture of that for us?
Happy to, yeah.
Some good drag racing.
Yeah. Maybe some of the drag races will stop and then, you know, like I hear them in the back of my house.
Welcome in.
Okay, that's all questions I have.
Um, I have a question. Um, so. Have we done this before, uh, like night operations and things like that in the past?
We authorized I dot, the OMA Department of Transportation, just a couple of years ago on Route seventy two.
Okay. Because I was curious as to whether there was anyone that lived along Randall Road in Sleepy Hollow that would uh, still have balance with what noise there was.
There's twenty four residents. I just counted real quick. And we have twenty four residents that back up to Randall. Some like it's going to have.
Could be.
No concern about the sounds, but it.
If it's a steady drone, guys, then it's usually what it is. It's just equipment. Without the banging of the, the trucks and the whistle blowing or whatever, what you're not going to do either, just signal drivers with flashlights. Without that, it's just a.
Sound machine.
Maybe some advanced.
Well, yeah, we're going to have to move quick. The days, they're working at the start date possibly the twenty seventh. Days, ten days, and tomorrow.
I would also change the changeable message boards that are out there right now to say night paving to begin week of five thirty one. Do I the.
But you still will know if you're locked on.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
They originally told us September, then we moved it back. So the state's a little bit of a moving target. If you'll forgive us, but we'll let you know soon, you know exactly what it is. But I think this is closer to the September date than they extended it. We have pregone, laid, laid it all out and all of a sudden they screwed it this forward.
I'm just curious, uh, if you didn't do night paving, how much longer would it take you?
Two to three times as long.
Could I ask your, your signage for uh, beginning five thirty one? Will that be on Randall? That'll be like in different, or could you put one like on Joy Lane? And what's the other as people come out of the village? They see the sign there. So this way, if they get them there, they know it right away. They're going to have night. Anybody exiting onto Randall would know right away.
We can do.
Yeah, just put it in a way, in about maybe fifteen, twenty yards or whatever, just so that it blatantly tells the residents that beginning X date, you're going to experience, you know, this at night. That way the residents that exit the village know. I mean, they don't have a choice but seeing it.
So be Joy and Kerry, can I take that?
That would is.
Joy and uh, start talking.
Two.
We'll, we'll.
This way they at least know.
Although we have press release, we'll send it out to. Part of the release of all the people. If you will prove that this is.
No, why, why can't also?
Oh, yeah.
And we weren't planning on doing, starting Joy Lane yet.
Well, no, it's going to be end of July, beginning of August, kind of in that area, so it won't interfere with it.
If you were to start or whatever, we would work with you.
No, it's my.
Considering it's going to be a lot faster, I would be uh, for as long as we let the residents know.
You said there's roughly two dozen. We probably come up with a new one or a mailer or something.
Sure.
Uh, we have a motion to so uh, allow the King County Department or Division of Transportation. The use of uh. The neighborhoods.
The move, Bruno.
Second, Thorn.
Moved by Prano, seconded by Thorn to authorize King County Division of Transportation to utilize night work on the resurcement project of Randall Road to two thousand twenty two. Further comments, questions, or discussion? If not, quick roll call, please. Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbitt.
No vote.
I'm sorry?
No vote.
Uh, Mr. Bruno.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and one, no vote, the motion so passes.
And just for clarification, that wasn't a no on it. That was I am not voting on the issue.
And I. Well, I think that's what I tried to say.
Right, so let me sure Tony gets.
And no vote.
Not an abstention, not, not casting a yay or an a, no vote.
I got it. Five affirmative and one zero. Five with zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Okay, turning to the agenda. We've got uh. I was one through four. I finished with that. Uh, the only thing I have for to make is that there is an error. There's a type of draft layer in the agenda, the ordinance that will be worked on later on tonight is uh, not number nine, it is number seven. So uh, the approval ordinance is two two thousand twenty two dash seven. And that, that's it. Seven or nine? Seven. It's here. I, I know, I changed it again. No. Want to change? All right. Never mind. Never mind. Okay, thank you, Tony. Uh, planning and zoning. Planning and zoning has typically in the past been meeting on an as need basis. But with all the issues that may be possibly coming to the forefront in the next few months. P and Z has established a definitive schedule coming forward and they will be meeting on the second Monday of each month. And therefore, we need to ratify their calendar of meeting schedules. So we have a motion to approve the P and Z uh, meeting schedule for the second Monday of each month.
So. Second, Deatley.
Moved by Hartman, seconded by Deatley to approve the P and Z's resolution for scheduling of meetings on the second Monday of each month. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Being none, roll call, please. Mr. Bruno.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbitt.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes. Motion so passes, thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next item is the attorney's report. We have no report. Engineer, since you're with us this evening, you have anything for?
Really, the only thing I was going to say is just uh, expect July to end of July, early August for the street program to start.
Yeah. All good, oh, fair enough. Thank you, Joe. Uh, Director of Finance.
Request. Um, a motion for the warranty amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty seven dollars and eight cents.
Oh. For it.
Second.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Hartman to approve the warrants in the amount. To that page. Hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty seven dollars and eight cents. Any additions, deletions, comments, questions? If not, roll call, please. Mr. Nibbitt.
Aye.
Mr. Bruno.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes, and motion so passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
The second item, um, our copier is over eight years old and it's cast its useful life. And we were going to look to replacing it. We have gotten a um, bid from um, the normal supplier that we usually use. And it came in at basically seventy eight hundred dollars. However, uh, trustee medic had made me aware of uh, what Mike Spiro, our IT person, had said. And so I contacted Mike and what he said is that um, they're in the process of replacing their four copiers. And so what they wanted to do is include us as part of their RFP to see if we can get a better price. The only difference is that we usually purchase our copier and they lease their copiers. Um, with a one dollar buyer at the end of the term. Uh, the main differences is that we pay the purchase price plus a regular maintenance contract. Um, and there's, they said that the uh, lease payment includes the maintenance. Um, I had looked through some of Ellen's previous stuff and it showed that the leasing was more expensive than the purchasing, which is why we went to the purchasing. So I leave it up to you, gentlemen, for what you would like to do.
Are we in dire need of it right now?
No.
No? Can we wait till we see what the RFP provides?
Yes.
I mean, the RP in reality should be, should be cheaper. I mean, if they're doing the due diligence, it's got to be cheaper.
Exactly.
Is it the same copier?
We don't know what they're, what they're proposing, but we basically have a pretty low end, just black and white scanning. You know, like situation.
Yeah, if we can hold off to see what they come back with, we don't have to tell them, we'll go with it. We don't like it, we tell them no.
I, I, you know, the only thing is, is I don't know that if it gets included in the RFP, if they commit to purchasing four or five or whatever, then we, we're stuck.
I'm sure it would be, but you've got to let them know, we'd like to know. They should be able to give you some, they should be able to give you some visibility almost now.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're going to an RFP, they've got to be able to provide some visibility. You know what you're going in at.
Right. At this point, I do not have a problem with tabling it until we get more. Like I said, I just got notified about this today and that's my.
Yeah, we need it, we need it. But I'd just like to see.
But if it's not. Tomorrow's operation.
Right.
Wait.
Right.
Uh, I would entertain a motion to postpone this conversation. So. Uh, we received word from West Dundee on the results of the RFP.
So move.
Moved by Thorn.
Second, Deatley.
Seconded by Deatley. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Okay. Uh, roll call, please. Mr. Bruno.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartman.
Aye.
Mr. Thorn.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nibbitt.
Aye.
Okay, six affirmative votes, motion so passes. Postpone this until further notice.
That's all.
Thank you, Eugene. Uh, comments from the public. Don. Okay, please note that according to ordinance, section one dash five dash four F of the Village Code, immediately following the director, the finance director segment of our agenda, there's a period for public comments. Comments are limited to five minutes per person with the total time allocated for public comment not to exceed thirty minutes. Individuals wishing to address the board during this time may do so by placing their name on the signup sheet on the agenda of any time prior to this segment of the agenda. Okay, please remember this is aside for public comments. Views and opinions do be expressed to the board. It is not a Q and A period. It is not a debate period. Okay. The first one on the list this evening is Jeff Chrysler.
Chrysler, yeah. I just had a few questions or comments. Uh, first of all, I just wanted to thank Public Works for putting up the new signs on Locust. Uh, and also replacing the one that was run over and was mangled. And they replaced it within a day or two. So I wanted to thank you for that. Uh, we were still wondering, uh, what was going on with that property? That was for sale with the public storage, if that was still going on or if that's a, that issue. Uh, if it is, you know, I think that maybe we can put a dispensary in it if we're looking for income. So just a, just a thought. Uh. Also, I know we were going to, are we going to get an update on the part today? Okay. And then I wanted to know about, uh, are they going to do anything with striping? Uh, they were talking about doing some striping possibly on Locust.
Yeah. We have a budget.
Okay, that's it.
What's that?
You've had three questions.
I didn't know I was.
I said, this is not a Q and A period.
Okay. Buddy, you don't have to answer the question.
Why are you looking at me?
Hmm?
Okay. Well, I just had some other questions about the speed limit signs, but I'll forget about it for right now.
Questions, you may call the individual responsible during business hours. This is the business meeting of the Board of Trustees. It is not a town hall meeting. David. Sitwell? Oh, okay, this is KDOT. Travis Redd. Uh, Sam Parker.
I'll just keep it short and sweet because I know people will hear on the agenda later, but if everything goes on track, residents, look for your legend newsletters for summer. Around June first in your mailbox, there will be information about a new possible subscription method. More about that later. Kathy and I, who's like the co-editor, we do our best to get the pages we have to provide you with quality news. So it is what it is. Sometimes things get omitted and obviously continue to tune into the board meetings for the more in-depth as to what's going on here.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, Rich.
I wanted to let the board know what the Service Club's plans are for Independence Day. We're going to have all the same amenities and activities that we usually have, but this year it's going to be spread over two days. Uh, the fireworks are going to be on Saturday, July second. And we had to move to the second because of, no pun intended, the skyrocketing cost of fireworks on the Fourth of July was just more than we could afford. And we could barely afford the second. And on that note, um, we're going to be sending out our mailer with the raffle tickets. If we don't get more of the village to purchase raffle tickets, this potentially could be the last year that we do fireworks. Because we just, we won't be able to absorb the cost. We usually get less than twenty percent of the village residents responding to the, our mailer. And that's where we get most of the funds for putting on the fireworks. So the. So the fireworks will be on the 2nd. And then on Monday, July 4th, we'll have the fishing derby, the fun run. When my friend, the parade and the band and the food as we normally do. And then when that's over, then that's it. There will be nothing after that. So I just wanted to let everybody know and if you have any questions, feel free to either contact myself or John, I'm sure can answer the questions too.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the trustee reports. So, Rose and Park, Mr. Hartney.
Regarding Sabatino Park update follow-up. We had a follow-up meeting last week, and I say a follow-up meeting, it was scheduled after DNR suggested we have this meeting when we find out how much money Osslet IBNR would have available. We met with Hitchcock Design, we being Eugene, Kelly, and myself. Kelly and Eugene have the financial expertise and I asked them to join me and appreciate them doing so. Hitchcock Design was recommended by the Dundee Towne Show Park District for their expertise in playground planning design. And they also have quite a sense of experience in applying for and getting Osslet granting, among other things. Appreciate their valuable insights and I think, especially because it was pro bono to the village. A lot was discussed at the meeting, it was a lengthy meeting. And I'll get right to it. In conclusion, the options that the village has before it in refurbishing Sabatino. With a hundred thousand dollars that we have budgeted for refurbishing the playground equipment. We can replace the playground equipment. But it's not going to be with similar equipment that you see there. The equipment that you see there was top-notch. Long-life design and it's, it has served that purpose, but we've had it about twenty-one or twenty-two years. The equipment that the hundred thousand would provide is very well-rated equipment, but it would be downsized from what you see there. And probably would be a combined playground equipment for various age groups, the younger age groups. So again, we can replace the equipment with those restrictions. As far as the Osslet grant, Osslet grant is granted by the IBNR, it's a fifty-fifty grant. There's fifty-six billion available this year. It's highly competitive to get it. And with the project so limited in size of ours. They clearly, Hitchcock Design clearly said we would not be successful in getting an award. However. There would be ways to get a grant if we would change and improve the scope of the park refurbishment and add such things, and these are just examples. Like a volleyball field or a basketball hoop or a bocce ball. Called court, is that what bocce ball? Maybe hiking, maybe hooked up to the trail over here. Somebody else suggested a portable net for hitting golf balls that they use at the ranges that don't have a practice range. Other discussion, what about Lake Sharon application? What about the other park over in Saddle Club, et cetera, et cetera? But all that means is more dollar signs. So. The discussion then changed to, well, what do the residents want? And how can we get input from all the residents regarding such? Then in a nutshell is where we stand. We're gonna continue the discussion in a little bit. Eugene, do you wanna add anything to this time?
Basically, in order to get the Osslet grant, we would have to have five elements. Five play elements. The park is one element, even though they're separate pieces, it still counts as just one element. If we did a hiking trail, that would be the second one. Then we would have to come up with three other elements that cost a minimum of five thousand dollars each. We also would have to make the play area handicap accessible. The costs for just the services of using Hitchcock would in the end be about thirty-five to forty thousand dollars. And in order to do basically the whole project, we would have to match with a hundred and fifty thousand. And if we came up with our own fifty thousand dollars, then we wouldn't need the Osslet grant. Because we would get what we want, you know, the Osslet grant would only force us to have elements that we don't necessarily want.
Yes. I would put out when they feel and if they feel, if we get to a point where they think we would qualify, they had a ninety-three percent success rate. Just one last comment. The active planning for the future of our parks didn't begin at this last meeting or just a few months ago. About one and a half years ago, after our park safety inspections were completed. We were reminded of the advanced age of the equipment. Two budgets ago, we had planned for this hundred thousand dollars. And it was appropriated at that time to reverse parts. With the financial restraints upon us at that time, that's all that could be done. So the decision for the residents to make clear to the board is is this enough? Just replacing what we have with something not quite as not enough? Or do we want more? And how much are we really willing to pay for it a little bit more? And that, that's my meeting. To George, he's next on the agenda, that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you Ed. That ends the park and recreation or park and roads. And we move to finance. Mr. Hoffman.
Well, we met, the finance committee met last week and this was part of our discussion. And we've been brainstorming, I've been doing some work to see what options are available, knowing the cost of equipment and what the cost is. And one of the things that we brought up at the meeting too, that you have to realize with one of these grants, and if I'm correct, when you start adding additional layers. Start adding additional equipment, additional layers, if you put a bocce ball court, you put a volleyball court, you do whatever, you know, that's open to the public. And there's no way we can stop anybody from outside the village coming in. So it'd be just like the individuals that use Geneva's park, that use St. Charles, that use the South Elgin. You know, I know some people in South Elgin and they did a beautiful job on that park and it looks all wood and all if you've ever been there. But they say fifty percent of the visitors there are probably outside of the village. So that's another thing you have to, you have to take into consideration. So we, we, you know, brainstormed this a little and came up with some ideas and one of them too is we do have a west side of the village. This is what I would call the east side, it's separated by the, by Sleepy Hollow Road there. And I'm sure with anything, you know, you're gonna have adverse feedback from some. And they had a playground which we are taking out or we demolished, didn't we, already? Or has that been taken out? So they had one, so that disappeared. And here we're about ready to start improvising or improving or replacing the one at Sabatino Park. So at that point, do we do this for the entire village? And in a way, you're isolating, you know, that entire side of the village, which is probably fifty percent of the village too. So what we came up with is, and what Ed just mentioned, why not do the best of both worlds? And you could replace a unit over in Saddle Club, you know, that might be smaller, you know, might, probably would be smaller, but it'd still be a viable P or not, be a viable option. And the other is we could re, redo Sabatino. And with that, we looked at ways, how could we finance this? I know they, they've taken referendums. You know, I was on different committees at the time when referendums came up over the last several years. And we draw, every one of them, you know, pretty much voted down, you know, so there wasn't a lot of there was approved, there was no approval for these referendum. So we asked, what are the options? We came up with an option that, okay, we can do, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, if I'm wrong on this, but we found out we can do a one-time referendum, meaning a levy, not a levy, it would be a, an assessment. But it would be for one year only. This is not an assessment that would carry through for years to come. It would be for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, whatever year. And we came up with numbers and what would it take to financially do it for both Sabatino and for Saddle Club? And we know that the hundred thousand were barely, I mean, were almost minimal replacement. And many of you may not know, but some of these parks in, in the county have cost in excess of seven digits. And several of them over two million dollars. So there's a lot of money in this equipment. But for an assessment of what we came up with, about a hundred and eighty-five dollars, one time only for every household in the village. That would give us a little over a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We have a hundred thousand already budgeted, so that gives us close to three hundred thousand dollars. And with that, we would not have to worry about the grant and also taking thirty-five thousand dollars of that grant, of that money and giving it to the grant. You know, obtainer, which I think, you know, when it comes to spending money like that, I believe, I, I've got challenges. But I know they're doing the homework and the due diligence and all that, but these are things that we can look at. So this is what we are gonna propose, or I'm proposing, the finance committee, which was last week, as I said. Are proposing to the board to come up with a one-time assessment. Which would be a hundred and eighty-five dollars that would give us a total of three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Towards the replacement of park equipment and I think we appease both Saddle Club and everybody in the lower side of the village and we have all new equipment. So that's what the recommendation would be. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. When, when we talked about Saddle Club's equipment failing and basically was removed over time. That, that's a specific street, a specific section. It was put up by the Dundee Park District when those houses went in to encourage residents to buy houses over there. Contrary, in addition to that, Sabatino Park is the heart of the village. So I would be completely against doing anything at Saddle Club. Because that's a restricted neighborhood that would only benefit from those people who live on that street. Whereas Sabatino is, everybody knows you come down here. Whether they live on the west side or this side, as you described. If our, if we have Fourth of July, we have other activities, people rent out at Pavilion. You know, so, so there's opportunity to make, just like people flock to a South Elgin Park or a Geneva Park. They would flock to, you know, our, our pride and joy, so to speak. So I think if there's any monies that are generated, the money should go specifically and only to a Sabatino replacement. I can tell you, if we can't get a tax referendum passed and it would have been around that much money. And that would have been over, over many years, I understand that. I have no idea how we're gonna get somebody to pay a hundred and eighty-five dollars a house. That's, that's an absorbent amount of money.
A hundred and eighty-five, a household is a lot of money.
In my opinion, it's a lot of money. When I just put gas in my wife's car, it was seventy dollars and she has a twenty-one gallon tank.
I understand that, but a hundred and eighty-five dollar assessment one time, I think is something that we, I mean, I, I understand the referendums, I've looked at it. I've been a village resident for over thirty years too. And I, I mean, now that, you know, I understand the finances and look at it, it's, it's either that or I mean, you put a referendum out there that's gonna assess them year over year over year. It's not gonna go, it's not gonna fly. But this, if we, what's that saying? An educated consumer is your best customer. Well, an educated taxpayer is going to understand too. And I think that you, I mean, this is just my opinion and the opinion of the committee that we did it. That the recommendation was we appease both, because it would almost be like if we did something with Lake Sharon. What do you think the people in Saddle Club are gonna say?
It's part of the whole village.
I understand that, but the bottom line is they're gonna say that lake has nothing to do with me, I don't go there.
So they're gonna pay a hundred and eighty-five dollars?
No, they're not. They're not.
So why would I pay, why would I pay a hundred and eighty-five dollars?
Because they're gonna give them.
To put a park, to put a park on in Saddle Club, but I don't even go to Saddle Club and I have no children that will go there. I would bring my grandson here.
That side of the village has plenty of children, so I'm sure.
You know what, I understand and I respectfully disagree with you. If we can't, if we have other things that, if we're looking to assess a, a one-time assessment of a hundred and eighty-five dollars to build parks with playground equipment. When we have water mains that are crumbling and we can't generate revenue to improve those things or improve the safety as some organizations in the village have come to the board, essence is pay money for signs and stuff. To me, this is absolutely ludicrous.
I, I say that we leave it up to the board and you leave it up to the village.
You know, my vote's gonna be if you're gonna make a motion.
I, no problem with that, but I just, okay.
Let me make one. Let's leave it up to the residents to decide. The difference here is the tax referendum, the last one did fail. This time, we're gonna tell you exactly where the funds are going, what they're gonna be earmarked for, and we won't use them for anything else. Let's just listen to the residents. Now, if I wouldn't rule out still getting the Osslet grant. And part of the Osslet grant is a public hearing. They do all of this. You'll have a public hearing, all the residents are invited, you'll know exactly where your money's gonna go. So, so there is a difference between the tax referendum and this one-time amount.
Does it, does it have to be one year? Could it be two years to lower the cost of the assessment?
It's for a decision.
No, I mean, there's no legal reason why it has to be just one year, is there?
No.
That's the other consideration too, you know, is to, to lower the cost, do it over two or three years.
I, I personally feel if it's an easier sell, you do it one time and you're done.
Yes.
That's my opinion.
Clearer than that one.
That way I don't have to worry about it still going on.
Okay, we got a motion from the board to explore the possibility of a referendum in the fall of two thousand twenty-two. For a one-time only park equipment replacement? That what we're looking at?
Trip of the east and west side of the village?
Well, let's, let's make a question of. I was gonna say the referendum's gonna go to everybody.
Yes.
I can't see what the question, you know, unless we wanna say everybody east of Sleepy Hollow Road will be on the referendum, everybody west of Sleepy Hollow.
Well, that changes the amount.
Let's include all the residents.
Yes, include all. Let them, let Kevin decide.
Then Anthony, it'll be up to you to fight to keep the funds from being used on Saddle.
So I think the thing is, I'll, I'll, we'll have a discussion here once we pass the motion.
Well, hold on, are we gonna have a discussion on the motion after it, or?
Well, don't we normally, when we normally have a motion presented.
Oh, okay, I see what you, I, I, okay, I got you, I got you.
This is a motion to explore.
Yes, the motion to explore. I.
George makes a motion to explore the referendum question. Hartney seconded the question. Now.
So my, so my question would be, so what I'm hearing you say, which, what I thought you originally were gonna say, was we're gonna make a vote on assessing a hundred and eighty-five dollars as a village board per resident. That's what I thought you were saying.
That's what we're exploring.
But now what I'm hearing you say, we're doing a referendum to explore so that the decision on this, when people go to vote next April in the consolidated election.
This will be in a win.
On November, okay, when they go to vote November, they're gonna see this, you know, something wording, something effect, those of you out would like to assess you twenty-five dollars to help build park equipment in Sabatino and in, in Saddle. Basically, some wording like that.
Got a cost of a hundred and eighty-five dollars, one-time assessment per house.
So then whoever goes to vote will vote yea or nay. Now, my question is, I've often heard, 'cause I tried this with another topic, which was voted down. Are, are, are referendums binding?
They can be. They can be non-binding or binding.
Okay.
It depends on what you're going for. We're going on this one, it's a binding referendum. We're It depends on what you're going for. We're going on this one, it's a binding referendum. We're asking for a special service assessment.
Okay.
Throughout the village on the property tax.
So at that point.
That's different than asking a question.
Okay, so when it's binding, so it's in the referendum, is it? Does a resident, when the resident votes, when, when the person votes for the referendum, yes or no, do they know it's binding in the wording?
This will be the discussion with the attorney as to the structure. Usually referendums are restricted by state statutes to how they may be worded. So that's what the exploration period is for. We will, I will contact Mr. Schuster, and at the June meeting, he will have that information for us.
So then, once somebody reads that, then it's up to them, that everybody has a right to vote. And then whenever that vote comes back, then what I'm hearing us say is the board then is obligated to agree with whatever that vote is before us.
The majority of the residents want it, I'm not even a voter, yes.
I, I, I understand that, but here again, when we first had the conversation this evening, I was under the impression you were making a motion to vote on this right now, today.
Really, for a referendum?
If we're setting this to the residents, then everybody can decide on their own. And you already know, Mr. Pareno's voting no when that comes before me at the referendum. Specifically because I feel it's unfair to spend money in another part up there that was a special street. That was designed for those residents when they moved in, in lieu of spending more money in our bubble, in our main village.
I, I would take exception to what you're saying, Anthony, on this point. I know people who have small kids who don't live on that street and went to that park before. So it was used not just by people on that street, it was used by many other residents.
Your call, young gentleman, a couple of years ago, Saturday.
Yeah, there were other residents have used that, just, you know, it's great that it's over there. And it's closer than a lot of, for those, a lot of those kids than coming to Sabatino, but many people have used that.
Then, then I would hope.
The big problem with that, and Anthony, is, as you say, it's on for cul-de-sac. And the park district does not want to assist us with that.
Right.
That, that one, they're saying, it's your park.
Right, it's yours, yours. So I just hope that as this moves forward, and as we, as a board. Prove a referendum to go before the village residents. That we also, in the next months and years, think about other referendums that we might need to assess residents. As we spoke some months ago, possibly water assessment for the water mains. If this is a way we wanna approach it, I am in complete agreement, throw it back to the residents. But I also think we should keep our eyes open to the fact that when other things come up in the village, we would need to take the same approach. That's my, that's my thoughts.
Okay. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Being none, I have a question. I've heard per person, and I've heard per household, which is the motion?
Per household.
Okay, thank you, that's more money. Okay, so it's per household. Okay, roll call please. Mr. Pareno?
I'm gonna vote yes, because it's a referendum, let the villagers decide what they wanna do.
Mr. Natalie?
Hi.
Mr. Harney?
Hi.
Mr. Thornd?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz?
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Anything else, George?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you, George. Water and sewer, Mr. Nimitz?
All I have is the water, sewer, and septic ordinance that ICCI submitted to Mr. Schuster for his review is. Much more comprehensive than any of us realized, and it's gonna take him until the next meeting to go through it to make sure it's all correct. So expect that the first meeting in June. And I would also add is that there were, some of the ordinances that Bart, was basically a rewrite the whole ordinance, and some of the. Information she was going off of was old codebook that had not been updated yet, so it's, it's gonna take Mr. Schuster a while, so. That's all I have, unless there's questions.
Any questions for Mr. Nimitz? Being none, Joe, thank you. Okay, next, police and public servant, our safety, Mr. DeAtley.
Just a couple of quick things. The chief has advised me that the fuel tanks are in. The power is to them, we're just waiting on the state fire marshal final inspection, which he anticipates having very soon. So that should be up and running and saving us money very, very soon. The other thing is, the, the chief has identified several part-time officers. And has interviewed them and is waiting on background checks to move forward with those. So that is moving forward as well, which will give us, give the chief some more scheduling options as he goes forward. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Building and Environment, Mr. Thorn?
No report.
Thank you, Mark. Building and Zone Enforcement, Mr. Pareno?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Anthony. Old Business, approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seven. Fiscal Year Twenty-Three Appropriations Budget, I have a motion to so approve.
I'll provide a motion.
Second, DeAtley.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by DeAtley to approve the ordinance twenty twenty-two dash nine, the fiscal year twenty. Seven, seven. Fiscal Year Twenty-Three Appropriations Budget. Any comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Nimitz?
Hi.
Mr. Pareno?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Natalie?
Hi.
Mr. Thornd?
Hi.
Mr. Harney?
Hi.
Six affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes. Next item is on Blue Business. On the New Business, we've got the approval of the draft of the Summer Two Thousand Twenty-Two Newsletter. Take you all, read it? Okay, we got any comments, supportive discussion, or concerns about it? If not, we have a motion to approve the newsletter as presented.
So moved, DeAtley?
Second, Harney.
Moved by DeAtley, seconded by Harney to approve the newsletter as presented. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call please. Mr. Harney?
Hi.
Mr. Natalie?
Hi.
Mr. Pareno?
Hi.
Mr. Thornd?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz?
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is, once again, a newsletter item. This is the subscription fee for the home delivery of the newsletter. A bit of history on this, in the past, the newsletter had been mailed on a quarterly basis to every resident within the village. Some years ago, the cost of printing, the cost of postage, brought that up, and we started doing it strictly on the internet by. Email, sending it up on the website for people to read, and discontinued the home delivery. However, it has been brought to our attention that there are a few people that would like it to be delivered. Whether they don't have access to the internet for some reason or another, and so thus the question. If we do have a home delivery, what do we wanna charge for?
Hundred dollars.
Hundred and eighty-five bucks per room. We mail, we go out twice a year, or not twice a year, four times a quarter.
They can be picked up here, though.
They can be picked up here, but some people would prefer to walk to their mailbox and get it, and then go back inside. I don't know how many. We did have a survey with the newsletter earlier in the year. Twenty percent of the three hundred and fifteen people that responded said they'd be interested in a home delivery. That's sixty people. Without knowing the cost, without knowing the cost. Okay, so we're talking about a buck or copy to mail. That's just the postage and the printing. It's not the, the labor involved in the individuals having to monitor it and maintain the subscription list, and. There will be some administrative fee to that.
If there's a medical reason or something, fine, but if it's convenience, I would ask. Those residents will consider the request.
No other interest in setting the subscription fee for the newsletter. Okay, next item under New Business, Website Upgrade. Mr. Thorn?
Municho, who is at the, actually, the top of the market in municipal websites, has given us a quote. For three thousand and sixty dollars a year. As a fee, which also includes all the setup and all of the transitions and moving of data and everything from the old system to the new. The only other thing to add to that, and John had mentioned he was interested in. An add-on option called email subscriptions and notifications. That's six hundred dollars a year, so. We're talking about a, a total number right now of three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. And I think that's gonna cover all of it. It, in, in looking through this and spending some time with this, it's, the price, I think, is, is amazing, and. Being at the top of their, being at the, the top of their market, I, I can see every reason to continue to go with Municho's. That's all I got. Any questions?
It's a yearly contract? So we always change our mind. We became on that.
Any other questions on the update of the website? This has been something that's been issued for.
A while.
A while.
I would be for it, because I know, let's face it, the biggest majority of the people these days go to a website to find a lot of information. So I would think it would be a good update that we can put out there.
And, and if I may, the, the two real compelling reasons for us to do this is that the old, the old website. Is old enough that some of the pieces inside of it are no longer compatible with, especially with the security features that are available now. Which makes that sort of a ticking time bomb, so. So that's kind of, between that and the fact that poor John, who's been trying to keep this thing on the air all, single-handedly for all this time. I wanna, I wanna take care of this for him before he leaves shrieking into the night, you know?
If I could add that this is in no way a reflection on John, but this is, I think, something that he would welcome to help him.
He's been asking for it for a long time.
Well, for some of the content update, which I think now requires some technical expertise to do, and with a new one involved. So we, we, we won't have to follow John around to try to get him to do it all the time.
How much have we depended, John, to do once?
Six pack a week.
When you depend upon the kindness of strangers. And his neighbor, and his neighbor. Kindness and, I'm not, oh, okay. All right, so we have a motion to accept the quote from Municho.
So moved.
Second, DeAtley.
Moved by Thorn, seconded by DeAtley to accept the quote from Municho for the. Website upgrade to the Sleepy Hollow.
Replacement, replacement.
Website replacement. Now, we're not gonna upgrade, we're gonna replace it, start all over. Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second?
Is the money in the budget anywhere?
This was budgeted in the budget for fiscal year twenty-three at four thousand dollars, so we're coming in three hundred and forty dollars under budget.
Awesome.
Time for immediately?
Well, tomorrow morning, I'll contact Municho. Yeah, I'll get ahold of them tomorrow and, and see what their timetable's gonna be, and that. They've laid out a pretty, pretty comprehensive plan for how to, to replace the website that we have with what they've put together, so.
No further comments or questions? Roll call please. Mr. Nimitz?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Thornd?
Hi.
Mr. Harney?
Hi.
Mr. Natalie?
Hi.
Mr. Pareno?
Hi.
Six affirmative votes, no negative votes in motion, so carries. Any other new business to come before the board? There being no new business?
Motion moved.
Second, DeAtley.
Moved by Harney, seconded by DeAtley to adjourn. Roll call please. Mr. Pareno?
Hi.
Mr. Natalie?
Hi.
Mr. Harney?
Hi.
Mr. Thornd?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz?
Hi.
Motion so carries, we are adjourned. June summer, six, next meal.
Eugene? Eugene? Other things that purchase order, they may really check when you get.
I'm sorry.
I mean, if we're gonna have to bail it out, it's gonna be hard to figure out.
I don't think right now, I think right now there's no interest in that. I don't think. No, no design insurance, no implementation. Oh, my God. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
I, I saw that.
Well, I seen, when I saw that, I saw that free grant, I thought that was a month, and I mean, there are places where that would be okay too.
Oh, yeah.